I'll see it.
And try doing it again. I'll give you the numbers again. She's on, so you're on.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Jean.
Thank you.
Everybody win.
You can leave now if you want, yeah, bye.
Call the meeting order, please. Now you're all set?
Uh, yes.
Okay. The record show that my firm is excused. Uh, so two seventy minutes to go through. First one is April fifth, twenty twenty-three. Does anyone have anything?
Can I just ask, um, one thing else to me? Um, South Peak has sent an email across the extension, and I was thinking we could do that. First or last meeting for the extension of June?
Ideally, the first meeting.
First meeting in June?
First meeting in June, okay, so let's skip motion to skip over the minutes. Second, but right on favor.
I.
Anyone opposed? All right, I don't agree.
We just gonna need to email them, came to me, and I did not see them.
Okay.
So first of all, I apologize for any confusion. I sent an email yesterday just stating that we are looking to postpone until the first meeting is June. Um, which currently, right now, we're still working on the master plan, so that's something I'm gonna provide to you guys before we bring another submission. So that's the end of this.
Okay, so the first meeting in June is June fourteenth. So a motion to continue this matter until six P M. on June fourteenth?
Oh, it was.
All right, Joe seconded. All in favor?
I.
Anyone opposed? Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, now you can move on to.
Okay. All right, let's go back to the minutes. Um, minutes are April fifth, twenty twenty-three.
We're doing which one, April fifth?
One is, one's are on the desk.
So.
Right? I had one change in one, two, 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 zero, three.
Yeah.
Oh, it just says that, um, if the planning board decides to keep the two thousand and six master plan. Um, I'm not sure exactly what I said, but I think that the gist was if no new master plan is presented, then the planning board would.
You, if they're involved in basically as well, doesn't present a new one, then they're bound by the two thousand and six.
As you're saying. If you're looking at conclusions on next, like, two hundred and seven?
Yeah.
They're pretty much, that's exactly what you're saying.
What line you want to call?
Yeah.
The conclusion on four, seven, through two, ten?
Yeah.
That's exactly, I think, what they're saying is that we, we will use the two thousand and six until the dot one event presented that we will take.
I still don't like that I, I'm stating if we decide to keep it, that's, that's not a, I don't think it's a choice we have.
I don't think that's what you said.
I think, I think that if no alternative.
Um, if no new master plan is presented, the planning board will have to keep, uh, two thousand and six.
Or will be bound by, I like that.
Right.
That.
It was that time danger. You said it, right?
Well, yeah. All right. Other than that, I'm with these.
But all approvals, but all approvals would be subject to the two thousand and six master.
With that, that is said on the next page where it did out, so.
Okay, does anyone have anything else?
Motion's over.
So seconded? All right. Seconded, all right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, moving on to the April twelve minutes.
Line one seventy-four? I'm just starting at the end of line one seventy-three, Calvin, let me really read. It's, okay, it, it, its goal, and it should say, is to be minimally, and it should say invasive, not evasive.
Right.
I don't think his goal is to be evasive at all, and if it was, we should have been stating it.
Well, he's been, parents are always trying to be evasive.
Well, that was a good point.
Okay, that was the only thing I.
All right, does anyone have anything else? Oh. Okay, most, most approved with that question, so a second? Go, all in favor?
Aye.
Good work, thank you.
Our state stays. I joined the, the conceptual, John Ghul, auto and truck dealing, auto and truck detailing and undercoating.
So I have a, I have a question.
Yeah.
The Lord. Mary is, my sister's married to my cousin. Is that a conflict? If it is, I will recuse myself. I have no problem.
Okay, well, I think right now, yeah, it's conceptual, conceptual.
Yeah, fun.
Yeah.
Secondly. Yeah, but it's my property.
Yeah.
Yeah. We're making difference, but it's not a major.
Yeah, and I, I believe that, um, if it comes to full site plan, I'll be noticed about her as well. But I mean, right now, we're only conceptual, but.
No, no, I'm just saying, so we can identify things there, so all of the, all right. So I want to make sure someone has a problem, like, say, like.
Yeah. Right. Put it all.
It's a, and we brought it to you because we're kind of looking for guidance. Um, we're not sure that it rises with, what they want to do, rise to the level of site plan review. So that's what we're kind of asking, is this sort of in the home business?
Yes.
Arena, or, you know, does, does the plan for what they want to do, I think, in the site plan review, and, and I hope not?
Let's see.
I think that's why we're here.
Okay.
Let's see, you guys some input from you about that?
Okay.
Um.
Yeah. How we look out for issues?
This case, couldn't it apply to a waiver site plan review? At a scale.
Well, we haven't heard it.
Well, I don't know, it rises that level.
Let's, let's get a presentation.
Right, if we look at the whole business statute, it pretty much qualifies the whole business, so.
Yeah, so. So make a presentation.
Okay. There, you wanna? And I do over there. To get the city started, I mean, way through the different parts.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
So what we want to do is put in a slab that the side is twelve by twenty-eight by six, right next to our garage. That's not the grooming business upstairs, where it is. And, um, what it is for is, my husband does undercoating, has been, that's like a side job for a while now. And it's a little dangerous the way he does it, so I don't want him to do it, because all we have out there is dirt. And he puts jack stands on their vehicles and jacks them up, he puts a piece of plywood under there, and we would like to make it a little more professional, and we're gonna open this business as a business, and with the detailing. So we have a slab to put a vehicle on to safely jack it up, do the undercoating. And, uh, the problem being is the garage is on the line for the variance. If we put this slab on, it's gonna be within that fifteen foot variance.
Setback.
Setback, whatever it is. Thank you. And Benny is the abutter. My brother Benny.
Hi.
Good job, Jim.
Okay, so.
Good job, Jim.
Yeah. Hold on, I may tell, we see a, um, a variance that was approved in twenty-ten, is that?
No, it's, um, it's not approved, that, that.
That's an application.
It's an application, we're just putting together, well, well, we, we worked on an application for a variance.
Yeah.
In the event that you decide that it's a home business, of a night, the site plan review, she would, no matter what, she would need a variance. Um, to do that.
What, uh?
Okay.
This district is in?
It's.
General use, right?
The rule is, you know, general use, general use.
Generally used. Obviously, yes, so home businesses are allowed in general.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay. So, this, that's the snafu we have, and, you know, having that slab put in, because it'll make the end of the slab come within three feet of Benny's line. But as you see the pictures, it's, it's that piece of property for Benny is not usable. It's wooded, and the driveway comes right through the middle of its property. And it's that piece that goes between that driveway and the state fence, so it's not very big. Uh, and he really doesn't use it, he's fine with us putting this slab in that close to his line. So.
Anyway, but when she already has a business there, she has various launch legs, or legs.
Yeah.
Um, and that's in the up, upper part of that building. Um, and they have a garage underneath that building, and that's where he's been doing, um, the, the detailing, you know, as a side.
Yeah.
Thing, but they want to bring their son into it. Um, so, uh, you know, that's part of what the thinking is, you know, in addition to putting the lift there, but they can only do it in two or three cars a day.
Yeah.
So it's not really gonna add a lot of, um, traffic. You know, people basically come, drop the car on, and then pick it up. And then they usually.
The car will, you know, at least one or two of the cars will be inside the garage. The lift is outside, we can't undercoat inside the garage, because it's that fluid film, it's a greasy spray.
Yeah.
And it has to be outside, because it wouldn't make sense to try to detail and clean cars in same building that you're trying to fill the other. Okay, it wouldn't work well. So, um, eventually, maybe we're gonna get a lift, that's a financial thing that will come down the road, but we just at least want to slab it, so we can jack up the car safely. And I won't be worrying anymore, and my son will be out there, so don't worry.
That's right, I figure the slab is three hundred and thirty-six square feet, usually, site plan review, the threshold's five hundred square feet. So that below that.
Right, and, and it's, um, you know, it's kind of a combination of a pre-existing business up above.
Yeah.
And then, like, a home business underneath, it's not in the home, it's in the garage next to the home.
But, um, but they're actually doing it, doing it already, you're just looking to make it a little more efficient.
Yeah, he's been doing that side stuff, detailing and the undercoating for a few years now.
So, I mean, personally, I don't, I don't have any issue, does anyone have any other questions?
No, there's no problem with that. You do have a question, though.
Okay.
Did we get it even from Benny? He's got property perpetuity, but they have to come back for us, for for the Z B A.
Well, they have an application, I, I missed.
That's what I'm saying, if they can get even with Benny, a revocable, you don't affect his, definitely his property. You see, if he stays on the land without having to go to the site plan review.
Okay, well, I think we just, we're gonna vote, it doesn't have to come, so, anytime we're going to the Z B A.
Yeah, that's what the E B A point you get.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I mistook the one, one, twenty-ten for, uh, yeah, I did finish it, too.
Yeah.
But except it isn't, as the plumber deduce, and it is, and the, and the district they're in, then the only thing they would need would be a bill of permit.
Yeah.
That's it.
Yeah, with a slab.
Perfect, I think that's fine.
Okay.
No, are they gonna need a variance?
Well, they won't need that, because it's, it's, own businesses on the lot as a special.
No, variance for the setback, not for the whole, all.
The whole thing, I think, is, yeah, that's, that's, yeah.
Yeah. Home business, exactly.
They said they would just need a variance for the setback, because, you know, it's just kind of, it's a structure, basically. And once he puts the lift in there, then it will, that will be structured.
It's an existing structure.
No, no, this is gonna be a new slab. It's gonna be poured, um, like, sawn ear concrete eventually.
Be a slab, and it will be the W on it.
Not, so, I guess, now, what if they decide they want a brick garage, will the variance cover that in the future? They want it.
Very assured, I would request, i- i- if you gotta come in for a variance, I would do it all, keep it all once.
Maybe we should, we should do that.
Yeah.
Request the garage, and then you'll get a, if they give you a variance for that, then if two years down the road, and it's pouring gray guns, and maybe everybody used to go to your other brother.
Yeah, Nick, yeah.
The entire car, we need from the town.
Yeah.
For detailing, I had to drop the cars off a couple times.
Yeah, yeah, so, we won't build a enclosed structure if we do anything. Um, what the hope was, is to get a lift and just have a roof over it.
Mm-hmm.
And else, because we have to vent it, it, you know, it can't be closed up, and you need the undercoating, it just doesn't make sense. So that's the most we're gonna do, yeah.
So maybe that's what you should ask.
And the abutters are just.
Just Benny.
Just Benny.
Uh, as far as, you know, the line being there.
Yeah.
Property line.
Yeah, she does have other abutters, but she's right near the intersection with ninety-three, so.
On the other button.
But does that?
There's a, there's a list of them.
Yeah.
So you've been currently doing it there, have you had any problems with anybody so far? Yeah, just ask them, because.
Benny better say yes, because he wants his car undercoated.
I get.
Looks like you're going to, good to go.
Okay. I think for the benefit of the family, should have a motion, vote on it, that doesn't, it's like plan review.
But it's gonna require.
Needs a variance.
It's very.
For the setback.
For the setback, it's not for the home business.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion that doesn't require a site plan review.
Okay.
Um, and that all it will require will be a variance from the Z B A for the setback.
Okay.
I'm seconded.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, good luck, folks.
Thank you.
Very easy work.
You guys can go home now.
Very actually created, yeah, but. I gotta be clear about, yeah.
Yes.
And God, and Facebook, there's two lifts with a, for a thousand dollar each. Just gotta tell you, yeah, no, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
It's not yet, but it is.
The good one, I know.
Any, um, any public participation?
Um, the guy.
Right. Like.
On that, no, not, not on that, no.
So, South Peak is coming back, uh, June, say.
Fourteen, fourteen.
Yeah.
They don't have.
No, there's anyone still working on.
That was the other part of the journey.
Right.
Yes.
Fourteen, not much happening.
No.
Really, a lot of meeting, but.
All right.
Right. Is there any other business?
I did have a comment on, on last, uh, meeting, so. Talked about, you know, people can kind of live for your die, and they could turn to what they want to do. And it struck me that, I don't think that's really the case, but it's, you know, the planning and therefore supposed to have a, you know, plan, and supposed to prove things, and it isn't just the people who can do whatever they want to do, it's sort of, it struck me as a thought about, how many, that one who made it.
Well, I mean, we do have, you can put a, you can put a shooting range in a residential neighborhood. So, I mean, the, you know, we do have protections for the residents.
Yeah, so it was just, um, something I thought about after the fact, you know, it's really, is that really the case?
It's slippery at night, choose one.
It was so fun.
The other thing, I was looking at the, um, the master plan for the town, just looking to get over. And they talked about, um, incentivizing certain activities, like, uh, last meeting was brought up about, um, employee housing, you know, having affordable housing every people. And to, you know, send the master plan that it could be incentivized, and I was wondering if that's ever been done? You know, by through tax codes or whatever else to, to do that?
So, so we haven't worked on that, um, you know, when that master plan was written, you know, you think of employee housing as a multifamily structure. And at the time, that was considered a residential use, where you would need fifteen thousand square feet per unit. Uh, so we changed it, so, you know, we use an example of Hampton in the South, yeah, that they can put ninety rooms, hotel rooms, but at the time, they could only put five employee units. So we basically created a new, um, classification, we call it restricted multifamily. And we made it a business use, and that basically allows them to, you know, cover whatever percentage of the lot that's allowable in that zone. So, you know, no one's taken advantage of it yet, but we're hoping in the near future, with all the rumblings we hear, that someone will.
It'd be nice if some business came in that would create housing for their employees that expected town to fly for them.
I didn't hear, what's that?
Be nice to town, the business coming in, but not expect the town to give residence for their employees, they should put it, put it out to the wrong people and bring it in. Take the burden off the town. Just like we had one guy who wanted to give free land, free water, so, I guess, they've had tax decrees on the property. I don't get that, I've lived in here my life. Mm-hmm, from, from a native point of view.
But Joe, but Joe, you work for a lot of the people who, who are built.
I can still make as much, I've been more working a kid than I do over here.
I'm just saying, you know, there's a lot of people who depend on the livelihoods, the businesses that are.
I deny that.
Bringing, bringing business.
I have been.
I agree with what you're saying, but I'm also saying the other side of that coin is, a lot of the, a lot of people reap the benefits of having other businesses come to town by the virtue of being able to work there, you know, so.
Have you gone to the seminars and conquered about these? I went to Chicago seminar with.
What, what, when was the last time you went?
About eight years ago.
Well, things have changed, Joe.
No, they haven't, at one point, we got a lot of somebody you want to listen to it. You have a destiny required for, 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 for minimum. So, to give extra housing, one out of seventy units, you put it to employee, work was how the employee housing. The other side was exactly the same. Inside, we have carpet, instead of, instead of hardwood floors, we have, for my guests, have granite, this type of thing. And we're set up, as they bought it to work in town, it's their perpetuity, but if they sold it, try to get killing. Uh, somebody bought a stay, Atlanta, or Mass, or whatever, they come to bond, or whatever. To make a big profit out of it, that was a no-no, it's controlled by the town. There were several scenarios like this, stayed brought up, put it on disposal, we want to look into it, nobody wanted to follow along with them, and they presented it. We should look at something like this, in other words, if you're gonna build a, eight hundred units over here, you can probably put about thirty-five, forty, that's some kind of housing in a certain area, the buildings look exactly the same.
Yes, you know, next time someone comes in, Joe, you can ask them that question.
I have many times. But that cost expected, but they don't make much money, they get.
I mean. I mean, that was what we were talking about, they proposed across three years, you know, they wanted to do short-term rentals instead of long-term rentals, and that's what we're against. They don't.
The one that shot them out.
I mean, we're talking, so, you know, they'll use a two hundred and fifty thousand per unit as budget, so that's.
That's not worth it, that's not.
Yeah. Another question I had, has it ever been considered to, um, have the town spend money to do things along Main Street, whether it be sidewalks, or you know, and anything of that nature would be considered to sort of unify the, the Main Street town?
There we go again, we did, but fifteen, eighteen years ago, we did that downtown community, we stopped the destruction of all the old building, unified, made it look like part of the, like you're working to walk it out now. But that gets thrown away to the side, nobody wants to listen to it.
No one wanted to pay the money, so spend the money.
Well, we did, in a way, I mean, you know, you take a look at where the road that went up back, it started, you know, it did start, the road back to the, the bank, and back up. They all, I mean, we started bringing that up to where.
You mean an access road?
Place was, you know, what's that?
You talking about an access road?
Yeah, I mean, we started to look at some different ways that.
We get a lot of, we got some pushback on that access.
Yeah, but, but we, there's still an access out back there, so some things have.
Well, the access is pretty much eaten up by the new town and the others. Going in back, and you're gonna come in right off ninety-three.
There's still, there's still an access to there, I think.
If you take out the railroad, the only way.
Then, yeah, there's, the railroad has a right of way to there.
Right.
The dead end, like at the post office.
But the, right now, you can still get from, can't you get from Paris through the Rite Aid, through the?
Yeah.
Nunn and Donut.
Between parking lots?
Yeah, you can get through in the back part by the railroad, I think.
I mean.
Yeah, the back.
Mark Restic was the one that started all that.
I did. Keep people off of Main Street.
I'm a run-up to Mark, I started.
Okay.
That's why you were getting.
Whoever, but I'm getting the part of it again, and that's, yeah, that's.
That's. Done forced by a planning board, where it was voluntary, people were allowed to do it.
A long ago was when they discussed putting the power lines underground.
It's been discussed, I think, every year or two.
It was on the capital improvements plan, the first four or five years that I was here.
That's.
Um, but it's a million dollars, it's a million dollars a mile.
Right.
Yeah.
It'd now be about seventy million dollars, and it's actually so high.
So they, at one point, the C I P committee decided that it was too pie in the sky, and so it's no longer on there. I don't think it had any money, um.
I think it was just.
In that line.
And, and it wasn't only that, it was also the fact that the town didn't really know where Main Street was going. We didn't know if it was gonna be two lane, three lane, the state was gonna, it's gonna be three lane, and then if you put all utilities underneath there, it's a big process to say where you're gonna put the underground utilities, versus if they're gonna have a whole nother lane, or you're gonna have to re, re dig up all, the whole sidewalk to do it, so. It's kind of.
Not just sidewalk, you could get trenches across the street, go on experience.
I mean, there's a lot of planning, so.
And what it's all about, you have to work about, get to do it.
No, I remember it was brought up.
There's, there's benches, benches on Main Street, remember, and then there's baths, someone talked about, I think, it's like, big lot of benches. And there was bathrooms, someone wanted to have some bathrooms for general public to use, so things like that have been discussed, just.
It all takes money.
Yeah.
Fortune people town, they have the money, the people that come into town have the money, they don't want to spend it.
The, the bathrooms on Main Street is, uh, is a big issue.
Um. They all think that's a warlord.
Well, someone's gotta do it. And one idea that's been brought up is when the police moves into their new building. There's a, there's a bathroom down there that you can, and if you first go in, you can access without going through any of the locked doors. I'm not saying we're gonna do it, I'm saying that it was requested that the board consider that.
You know, but one time, they considered putting in about eighteen side crosswalks up and down Main Street. That would slow the traffic down to about five miles an hour, the state put a stop to it. As they suggested. That Pat, Matt Dave, when he brought that up.
Yeah, they didn't do that, because I can tell you. Rob, Bob Pearl, when he was here, we added crosswalks on Main Street.
Yeah, but wasn't eighteen?
Oh.
Yeah, but, but I mean, there's something.
Right, right, it was, it was, Bob Pearl worked with the state, and we got some more crosswalks across on the state, uh, because of that, because they wanted, there was such span in between the ones that were there that they talked about getting people across where the, where there were more businesses.
Right, but since Bob Pearl was here.
We didn't, right.
We, they, the state worked with the town.
Yeah.
And, and added some and combined some, like, they took this one and this one, and eliminated one of them, but moved this one down, I mean, I, I'm not sure.
I'd like, that's exactly, somewhere along the line of town, get into something like revitalization like Concord did, or their ma, of, of their Main Street. They put in traffic calming, and they put in, they made that, the Main Street Concord, it, it's pretty sharp, you know, I mean.
And it's like a middle, delivery trucks can park and have service to business.
Right, I mean, it, it, it looks like something, it's not just a thoroughfare, you know, I mean, and, like, and, like, it could benefit from something like that, if that was. Something like that, if there was ever an opportunity, how the opportunity would present itself, who would pay for it, if there might be some grant money or. How Conker did it, but that was pretty sharp.
You know, on the Main Street, don't state this, we have to work with the state, whatever they have.
And does Conker own that Main Street, you think?
Yeah, to the state, you would know, that's the state right away, those three is in Concord, that's belongs to the highway department right away. They work the state under a certain guideline, they have a different zones you go through. End of a certain district.
I mean, talk about something that screws up the sound, that would, that would really.
One problem is here. When it built along with development this side of the street, we should have made a setback this side, another twenty feet further back. That would give them the way on the road to do it.
Twenty years ago, you about this.
Yeah.
Was that they wanted the buildings closer to Main Street.
Right.
And have the parking behind. Which is like how Dunkin' Donuts. Which was Dunkin' Donuts in his bill, but that's.
When it, when Burger King came in, they wanted those right up front.
You wanna have a walkie downtown.
Right, we wanted to have a walk, pedestrian friendly is what they called it, downtown.
And Mark Reddick told me himself, that's what killed those businesses. The way, the driveway is in the way to set that up, Mark Reddick told me this himself.
Which businesses are you referring to?
Dunkin' Donuts.
Big line there, if you go for coffee.
Yeah, yeah, they closed, the only reason they closed, because they can't find enough help, because I don't have a product.
Going back to your comments about um employee housing versus, uh, well, employee housing shortage. The um. Supreme Court just ruled uh against the town of Conway on their restriction on short term rentals in. Private homes, and that it is allowed, but the reasoning was that there was no. Definition of. Residential uh use in in their um zoning waters. Which I, I don't believe we have anything that we, in our ordinance, that identifies. What can and cannot be used as a residential use. Um, people staying in a house is cause. Residential. They stay there for one night, it's a residential use, they stay there for sixteen years, it's a residential use. One of the, now that they've made that ruling. One of the things the town or the planning board could initiate is is looking at. I uh, uh, giving a definition to what is a residential use. And even go so far as saying, okay, if a business license is is involved, like a rooms and meals tax license. That it's not a residential use.
Well, we could also define. Short term housing underneath. The um home business, because a home business could be. Short term housing. And you could, maybe we could identify that up with some of the short term business. Have i- either a tiered. Level there or something that defines that short term housing.
I would keep those two categories separate, and we may want to relook at home business. As a business in the home of a person who lives there full time or or predominant.
That's what I'm saying.
Okay, as a home business where I'm gonna buy a house, rent it out as an Airbnb.
That's what it is, it's all.
Right now.
Right now, it is.
It is.
And that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
That's what I was saying.
Also, the fair trade deal, I read the court on the same. But it has to be insured, you're out of place, you can donate, I'd have, somebody's known in the area to have it. Supreme Court ruling.
Right.
That's the whole town could catch out.
That is correct, okay, but but it.
But it has to be doing requirements for parking. This is gonna stop it, you know.
Right, right. In zoning, you have zones, and you have a lot of uses in that zone, if residential is a use and you don't define. What?
Residential.
Residential is, then it's allowed, that's what the Supreme Court. Now, we don't allow residential use in the, in the industrial park, so you can't put, put it in the Airbnb in there.
Be too dangerous.
But doesn't matter, it's it's not an allowed use. But if if you wanted to put in any other zone where residential use is allowed. The Supreme Court said, you don't have any definition. That restricts it, it's it's then allowed.
You better have it.
So, I mean, I guess. We don't. If you did that in mountain residential, for example. That wouldn't really, that really wouldn't do any, make any difference as far as employee housing. I mean, was that?
Work for short term rentals.
I think the mountain.
If you did it, if you did.
I mean, if you did it in some of the neighborhoods, it might. I think that's where, yeah, I think the mountain residential zone. There's no reason to to restrict and strict short term housing, I mean, you you work for.
Yeah, I know, you'll see, and a lot of the condo docu- documents, some of these condominiums have. They do not allow short term.
That's.
Well, that's, that's theirs.
That's their decision.
Oh, you're right.
They all buy into it, that's.
Yep.
That's they want it, that's. They have the right.
You're right, Gerald.
If you go back twenty two years, I believe. And up through. The mountain itself is pushing, it's put residential unit in their, their own house, they're going to keep working the ski area, you remember?
I absolutely remember that, Phil Gravely was a, was a proponent of that, putting an apartment in your own house up on the hillside so that loan employees could live there. Or or town employees could live.
There is another scenario, you could like for town employees. You could build like a housing project, like you're gonna do down by Billy Holiday now. I don't know if you ever saw that on plan. That would be built by the wooden eddy and Jackie, if you remember correctly. Billy Biden well went back with the cabinet. With certain. Yeah, oil chemicals, they shut that down. Plus Jack went bankrupt. What you would do there, some of the scenario with this, they took the apartments. People who work at the tower that brush crack out. The town oversees the rentals of properties. The sale of the properties, you could buy it within as long as you own it. But you cannot turn around and sell it to somebody else to make you kill it, you buy a hundred thousand on a special grants. You can't turn it out with three hundred thousand dollars, somebody came in, wanted to just get a key rental. Have to go to town employee, you don't get back up straight to seven a year for the sale. That was one of the court, that's one of the class, class that took it. It's still in effect right now.
I mean, those classes are only good as the instructor. And and again, he, you know, his question when looking at the master plan, what are we doing? Uh, to incentivize, not not to buy land and develop it, become landlords and boom, and and. What are we doing to incentivize? One of the things that's now open as of, what was the court ruling, a week ago?
No, a month ago.
No, it's recent. Okay, when was the? All right. It was recent.
It was February.
Okay, it's February.
I bring your papers in if you want.
Okay, you bring papers, but the court ruling opened up. What a planning board like ours needs to do to incentivize. To um use. This housing stock we have for residential bond for news instead of residential short term news.
We discussed it, but to reinforce the time.
But we haven't been, haven't had any discussion since the Supreme Court rule, we've been tied up for what, three years? Uh, two years, it waiting for some guidance because. That we knew that if we did anything like Conway did, we'd be brought to court like Conway was. So now, now there's a ruling. That now is the chance that we have to incentivize, that's all I'm saying. The other question is, once it are already registered. They grandfathered, so how are you gonna, how we, they could let, we could legislate them out of this?
Well, you wouldn't.
I think it would be to look into. The legal. Way of of enforcing what we do. Does everybody automatically get grandfathered, are there, are there sunset limit, you know, whatever. But either way, it would stop. The whole town from becoming one big hotel. Or at least, at least in the downtown area.
If they buy a house to the side, three hundred thousand, tear them down. But if I hundred thousand, they're all about them, local people can't afford to buy themselves anymore.
I, I guess since.
That's an A to the B, progress.
I mean, you know, I mean, why, why is someone gonna take a hundred fifty thousand dollar haircut on the sale of their property?
I agree, that if you had property, when you get much more, you're getting out of town.
Yeah, I'm stressing the incentivizing that brought up and that I'm asking and calls for.
We should look at some of the businesses to. Trying to incentivize them to be able to create more housing. You know, through through planning ordinances, you know, that might, something that might. Or 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 the town give them a. A rebate, give them something. A lower tax fee rate or something, might incentivize. Try to incentivize the people who have the money or. And, I mean. It's no.
You wanna look with that.
You don't have to be, you don't have to be a rocket scientist, guy. If if a. Hotel has X amount of square feet, he wants to get all the dollars he can out of that square feet, well, then you gotta give him, you have to give him a reason to say. That he, that he can't, you know, it would be better for him to have. Something for his employees to stay at versus taking the dollars off the road.
You know, I think either, I mean, restricted multifamily has dramatically lowered the the expense to develop workforce housing. I mean, that's my. I agree, I think that was a great move.
You're talking about as far as. Where where else they can build?
Yeah, like 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 the Hampton Inn. Instead of building five units, they would then be treated as, build as many units as you want. Seventy percent, no, is it seventy? Coverage ratio, whatever the lot coverage ratio is for the hotel, it'll be the same for for um. Apartment units, so he no longer has to be restricted to fifteen thousand square feet each unit. But another way to do that again, uh, you know, I I'm not looking at throwing money, like, you know, free tax fees, taxes, we do as well. What if we did it the other way? What if we said, okay, your your lot coverage ratio is is eighty percent? Okay. Made it sixty five percent, okay, but if you put in long term housing, okay. You can go, you can get seventy percent. Or eighty percent, or make it, make it, you can build more if part of what you, that increase is.
But you don't wanna go, you don't wanna go too far the other way, because then you'll have. A bunch of, you could have a bunch of. Structures that are. Built up to the, to the limits of the law, that are, that are long term housing, that are without any green spaces, space.
Well, I mean, there's other means, there's some setbacks and a lot of coverage, which you already have. Now, we've, is it, what's our most? That we have in in. The village residential is the highest, I think it's, is it eighty or eighty five? Okay, let's say it's eighty. Then then if we reduce it to sixty five. Okay. We'd have more green space, but if you build long term housing. As part of it, you could increase that to eighty. Full downtime, you gotta have residents living here, I mean.
Right, but you know, you don't wanna train so much of the, into the actual building. Still want to have enough, so, because with all, all people that are in there, they gotta have some place to do something, you know, besides just go and park a car and go upstairs. I mean, I know they have that in cities, but it. We don't wanna.
We're allowing him to do it at eighty percent now.
Okay, let me just. Okay, you ready?
Yes.
Small business district eighty percent. General use district seventy percent, village center seventy. Village residential sixty. General residential fifty. Rural residential fifty. Mountain residential fifty.
Half, half of the space is is green in a lot of the zones.
Right. But those are possibly the residential zones.
Right, but if you took the seven to two seventy percent zones.
Right.
And brought them back to fifty five, sixty, I I I don't know what's right numbers. But then the incentive becomes, you're allowed to go back to the seventy percent. But you have to ha- include. That extra fifteen percent, whatever we give them, has to be.
Has to be.
Last meeting, you had a person over here proposing building structure that was across the street. He's spending some money to build something to make some. You can think about what would it take to get him to build employee housing? And that's all it was, just, that's what you wanted, and what you wanted to look like.
Effective problem, so he's not gonna build it.
Yeah, but I think some of it is exactly what you said, though. You know, I mean, businesses, they go looking at this stuff, and they're looking for employee husband. There's, there's still property available. And Lincoln.
Yeah.
Animal stock for 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 businesses to buy, and they are buying them to make employee housing out of current. So, before we go changing everything, you know. We gotta figure out a way to make the businesses who need the the most employees. Find some of these properties, hook them up so that they can use them. For that.
Well, I think everyone agrees for the need to employ housing, but no one wants to put up the money, that's my meat situation.
I guess that's my point, if anyone wants to put up money, what can you do? To encourage them to put up.
We need the new businesses. We have new water, new sewer. More traffic congestion, we have two lanes coming to Lincoln. Eleven, we have more traffic here in Main Street, Lincoln, in about five years, than they have in Old Town and North Broadway.
Why couldn't we, why couldn't we do that as an impact fee? And buy, have the town buy a piece of property?
Then we're getting into real estate specul- hearing, we're all assuming that they're gonna rent, but there are times when there's gonna be vacancies.
What about tiny houses?
I can't hear what's that?
What about the tiny house concept?
The tiny house?
Because a lot of people who are got excited about manufactured housing. Change. Um, they asked about tiny houses, and tiny houses then kicked it into. Um, the fifteen thousand square feet per unit. So, it just occurred to me that um, maybe the tiny houses. You could use them in a change of, you know, which, you're changing.
But the tiny houses are gonna solve a single person or a couple coming in.
Not a lot, not a family.
It's not gonna resolve someone that you want to come up here and ask children or needs things like that, so, I mean, I think seriously. Th- this is something that you could use. On businesses, and that would generate some money to be able to either buy a park. Or buy a a chunk of land. In order to create a residential, long term housing project that the town didn't have to fund. It just hears the land, just like the industrial park.
Well, that's what we tried to do with the head. And then everybody, not one single person came to those meetings, it was a big, not one.
Right, and and the impact fee has a time limit on it, too. It's restricted what we can use it for, it's not. For, it's. So, again, I'd rather go with the incentive, going again to your question about across the street. If that lot coverage ratio was fifty percent instead of seventy percent. What anyone could do with any mainstream property would be reduced. But then if we said, if there's a. Long term residential component to the building, then you can go up to seventy percent. There's your incentive, there's your economic incentive to say, okay, I can build, you know. Free. Box houses that I rent out short term, or I could build six apartments um on the same lot. That that might be the economic incentive that they need, without the town buying land, giving credits and all that stuff. Well, that only reduces the land costs, which is only ten percent of the cost of the unit. So, you know, implement their condos in nine hundred square feet, they would sell for about a hundred thousand. And they rent out for twelve fifty a month. So. Two fifty, you build two fifty unit to build, I don't think you're gonna get twenty five hundred bucks. For workforce housing a month, so I mean.
I agree with you, yeah.
Who can afford that?
I, you have something to say? So, why, why wouldn't that work in Lincoln, though, at twelve fifty a month? Yeah, but they're only paying a hundred thousand per unit. Well, because Lincoln, I mean, this is the metric I've been told, it's two fifty a unit. So, I mean, I'm just saying the cost per unit is twice as much, so to get the same return. Is that because of the land cost?
Land and building.
Construction, I mean, from meetings, from information I've gotten in the meetings, you know, I haven't got any essence to build any housing. I'm just, I, my thought is that to build a house in Plymouth and to build a house in Lincoln is gonna cost the same construction cost. Right. The difference is gonna be the land cost and the utilities cost. Right, so. So, these have, these condos sell for a hundred thousand. Okay. So I invest a hundred thousand, I get twelve fifty a month. Okay. So if I'm gonna be in Lincoln, let's just use double it. If I'm gonna spend two hundred thousand here in Lincoln, land and building. To make the same return, I gotta get twenty five hundred a month, so. You, you see workforce housing, people.
You you see workforce housing, people will be gonna be able to spend twenty-five hundred a month on rent.
No, but if you can build a house in Plymouth for a hundred thousand.
Construction, existing construction.
Okay, and and again.
You're talking renovation, that thing?
No, I'm talking about if you wanna buy a unit down in Plymouth.
That already exists and is.
So we need more housing stock. Where am I, where am I gonna put my, where am I gonna put my my two hundred grand? Am I gonna put it in one year or am I gonna put it in two?
Oh, yeah, you put it two.
So I mean, that's, I mean, that's what I'm saying for incentivized. I mean, you're thinking, you don't wanna think like an investor, not like an idea, you wanna get the most return as possible.
Right. Yeah, I think if you could build seventy percent instead of fifty percent, but that extra building allowance is gonna allow you to build.
I mean, so you know, I agree, it helps, but you know, the land cost is only ten percent. The two fifty number that was thrown out there, they were only using twenty-five thousand unit as the land cost.
Must be a hundred motel units up on the highway doing nothing. What's going on?
That to me would, and I've said it for years. Uh the highway would make such great workforce housing up there, it just. I can't imagine why one of the developers just doesn't go up and buy. Or a group consortium bump go up and buy. They'll be uh uh make an offer on that that they couldn't refuse and and turn that into.
Turn two something to one if they had to, but those own kitchen actually.
I I totally agree, and I think it was a huge opportunity missed for the Beacon North, so. All of those units have kitchenettes.
Well, there's one property up there that's not being used like that, too.
Was that, they said they raided it during COVID because Jane paid welfare money. Um, for those people to stay in those units over the beacon.
Beacon is small and the beacon wasn't like seven more.
Beacon, it was a beacon north in Woodwards.
Could we incentivize? Well, the people up on. Might wanna or could turn some of theirs into. Well, I don't know, but it's a question.
I agree, up there is is where and how to do it.
Yeah, the infrastructure is already in place.
We couldn't have people doing, to the people that get enjoying with woodchuck.
Could the developers create some incentive? People who need the workforce housing, approach businesses up on the highway and say. How about if? If you have a fifty-room hotel. Ten of them. If we could take ten of them off your hands somehow and. You make them go into long-term.
I I have a customer, that's all we said, you know, if one of those hotels comes up cheap, he would buy it and make it for. Long-term housing.
He's looking for cheap, but I mean.
Acquisition cost might be cheap, you're gonna need a significant amount of renovation.
Well, right, but there's there's power and numbers. And if you take a look at the same. Take a look at how Lincoln got through its water sewer and all those issues we had. What happened? The developers got together, created the roof, one twelve council, they created. Different, they created entities, I think there was two of them at one time, I think, if I'm not mistaken, way back when. And they both worked on giving, putting up funding for Lincoln to be able to get water and sewer. And 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 have the. The capacity and what they got in return for was um. Points, water and sewer net fee points, that was graduated. But there was, but there was, yeah, and it was more than that, but if if the businesses could get together, I know there's a bunch of them then together, if they could get together. And talk to the 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 people who own up there on the highway, maybe they could, with all their business brains, come up with something they could say. Cause I know those rooms aren't full all the time and they might look at it and say, you know what? If we had. If we've got fifty rooms, if ten of them are full all the time, using this long-term housing. Proposal from businesses, we'd be that much more ahead of the game financially, so maybe it would be better for them because they would have a. A certain amount that are full all the time. You know, so.
Let me interrupt you, but I think to make ten. Long-term rental units, it had to give up fifteen motel units just for the space.
Yeah, I don't know how it would work, but I mean, I think the developers have. A, the developers have the. The contractors that could help. They have the need for the for the. Places for the people to stay, so and 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 they have the finances to be able to help out with some of that, so. To get them together might. Might help a lot.
Down to Shalamar over in down. And the lake where the squalls. Almost that time hotel, you work for it. And 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 immigrants, he's making more off the immigrants than he was off the people on the street.
Well, what you're gonna find eventually is that the businesses. On Main Street are not just gonna be on Main Street, they're gonna start going back now. And some of that housing is gonna get eaten up, just like in every other town across America. So, you know, and and but it's, you know, and so then you're gonna even be taking less of it, you know, so. It to me would make sense for them to. If we could zone it that way or do whatever we gotta do and 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 or change the square footage as I say. Maybe you can have more rooms. They could add more rooms on, or they could, and and developers could work with them and do that, I mean, that would be, I think that's the most ideal place in the world to have. Long-term housing for for.
What you can do. They don't, let them, let them all like the hotels, like big hotels up through three. They have a lot of, they know what their surplus is. Could you bring two rooms into an apartment? They can keep it, and they don't have to do it in perpetuity, they can take it back, think it'll work out. You don't lock them into a preference after perpetuity, they're gonna change, time change all the time.
It's just, I mean, it's a, it's hotel motel, I don't see that used being outlawed in room three, so I mean, they can, they can always reapply and switch it.
Why should they have to? They wanna close it out in long-term housing, back to short-term, you have their.
So basically just convert your rooms into kitchenettes and. Whatever you want, except.
I know the um counties putting people up in Beacon or. Some county program would. To go up there and take a look, move it, it shows up.
That's a great place, I mean, maybe we should structure that that way, see if there can work.
Right, so I think something needs further discussion, but.
You gave us some.
I think it's, I mean, I think that's sort of like kind of thinking, I think is really. Great, you know, it's really. Proactively try to make things happen. Do you, I don't, do you have? I guess you don't have, I if you wanted to. Put in something to make. Allen more attractive, you have to go to the meetings and raise money for like you did the police station to get approval for. For that kind of stuff, I mean. Have you ever looked at what you would wanna do if you could get it approved?
We have. You get a gold copy of the Town Town Committee Report, you find out a lot, what has been recommended over the years.
What town, what report?
We can have a downtown committee.
Downtown committee?
No, they said the committee dissipated after a few meetings, no one, no one had the motivation to show up.
They have a year and a half and quit.
I don't think they had any recommendations, I think they just said.
Curse it, if if you had the initiative to say, what do you wanna do? Then you could put something together to do it with the town, get something through.
There was meetings on one of those committees, I can tell you.
How I'm gonna get involved investing in private businesses?
There was a money that was the issue.
Always, always the money, yeah, but.
We did get. Ten new banners that say, welcome to Lincoln, New Hampshire. And we're gonna get more next year, and we want a rotating base.
Can we get happy holidays?
Are those ones that want, those get replaced, cause they were sad shape.
I know, the ones up in Route three are the worst.
Are they still there? I meant to ask you about.
With the number, there's there's some new ones up on Route three. But then there's there's some that are ratty, so ratty, you can't even read the words.
We should take those down, I I would think town just. Better to just take them out rather than have something looking like that? I I drove down there the other day with my wife and I.
I was waiting to see which which ones got replaced, there's there's one bike, a couple bike flocks or in that. The old ones? Yeah, between the interstate and Clarks, there's there's several that are in terrible shape. The ones north of the interstate, which is when people get off the exit. Um, by your place, they just replaced that one. And then going up beyond my house.
Cause when I went down, those were all, it was terrible, way down through.
There's one thing we really should change, though. This flag out front by the town hall. If that left out at night, there's no lights on it, it's ratty sometimes. It's a disrespect to the US government. I know I can mention it before, but you go, I should bring up the collective, you go in some night.
What you're supposed to have, I think you can fly American flag at night without a light.
Okay, so would you take that?
The big problem with Main Street is state wants to turn it into a drag strip. Because they don't wanna back up on the interstate, and so all this pretty stuff and slowing traffic down, this isn't gonna work.
We're not at that stage yet, but we're getting there.
Well, we don't, we don't have control.
They just wanna get it through there as fast as they can, and I'm just sitting here watching, doing it too.
I think they wanna stop traffic from backing up on ninety-three.
It was a recommendation. On the other side of the river. Have an off-ramp coming off ninety-three, come to the south mountain, ready out, yeah, an off-ramp going on southbound only. But the guy that presented, it was laughed at, totally, it's awful, you don't have to replace it.
Actually, it's not, Venice to Charm had. Some serious problems with it when it was gonna be come off the interstate, come, cause that was gonna come.
Everybody had problems with it. Including the state, which it it wasn't a recommendation, it was an idea. And it got shot down on all fronts, the state didn't want it. Wanted and the businesses didn't want it. And and so it wasn't a single person, it was. Pretty unanimous that.
I mean, I thought process was at the time, it was only ten weekends a year that we really needed it.
But now it's changed.
Well, we don't need it this weekend, we can use the classroom weekend.
Free freebie weekend. Coming up Main Street, that one was by West Street. That divided, you couldn't go across. They put flowers in it, everything else all the way down. Wait, I turned Main Street to four lanes. Meeting and conversation.
Before next one, can we discuss the Pemmy Base Camp and get that done so that.
Put it to rest.
Put it to rest. I'll put it on the agenda sometime, so I'd like, I mean.
You know, let's let's put it on the agenda in two weeks, if if Brian, can I ask Brian if he can come and we can just put this to bed once and for all?
What what are we asking Brian to do?
One site plan review, in other words.
I I think the plan report needs to meet first, it is, because OJ, like OJ doesn't think they need it, I I take a look at the facts that that I have and. You know, the only real facts that I have on it show that the water tap thing. That shows it never had bars, never had kitchen, it never had sinks in it. It's now owned, the bit, the land is owned by.
I mean, we would call, we can't regulate the land.
So, right, but. If 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 they come up through a change. With this latest revision that they did, I I I think that it would behoove them. To come to site plan review to get it done so they can have it the way they want. And 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 tell us what it is, it's just like having a master plan and not sticking to it. It's, you know, so tell us what you wanna put in that building, come back in for site plan review and then just be ready for the 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 winter instead of getting there and. Someone someone complained about whether it.
I think we should just have one meeting, have the actual parties here and just get it done.
Well, I think it's gonna be a big. I don't know if you need to, I I think we need to decide whether or not we think it needs to come in or not, or whether whether it's a change, like. OJ's different than what I think, you know, so I mean, the plan report really kinda good.
I mean, I personally, I think if it's zoned for something or approved for. One thing and they've modified it accordingly, you know, I think they should have another set.
Right, well, we don't even know what's been done, if anything, that's, I mean, that's props.
We have to look at the, we have to look at the facts.
Right, well, I mean, I think what you have, go ahead.
I say, starting with the um conditions of approval, you know, two thousand and four or five or whatever. Okay, and that has to be the basis of. Any decision we make. And and we would specifically, I mean, I think. The burden is on us, they have, they have an approved site plan. With conditions of approval, the burden is on is on us to say. This condition X is not being met, and here's the evidence that we have that is not being met. And until we go through and 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 lay that out, I don't think we should even have a conversation with the the.
But we need to do that, but the the thing is. And a problem is, I've got it raised.
It's, I don't think this is anything in there that I saw that is, that's like the big woo-hoo, ah-ha mode, there's nothing that says. They're not doing that.
Yeah, the rest.
Okay, well then, let's lay that out, present it to the board and let us discuss it.
Just discuss it, so maybe we've all discussed it in past, everyone really discussed it.
Okay, who is going to present the facts or or present the the conditions? In which ones are being violated and what? Because all we had so far discussion is people's opinion on what they think, which which I'm not gonna make a decision on that one. And I think it's a waste of time to discuss, to be honest. If someone comes in and says, this is the condition and this is why it's broken, I'm happy to sit down and let's discuss it and see what what.
It doesn't need to be a condition. It all it need to be the deviation from what was originally approved.
Correct, it's the whole thing.
The whole thing.
With the conditions.
Right, and 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 Carol gave us all that information. She gave us the 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 water tap fee sheet, two thousand and five, the letter that says what it was supposed to be, I mean, that she gave us all of that.
Just wait till Joe gets back and I'll pull the board to see. We just put it to bed one way or the other.
I'll have a quick check and see if he's okay.
I'll let you do that. I like the idea, I've always thought as to why the hotels. On North Lincoln don't. Invert to like longer term rentals.
Well, I mean, until twenty twenty-one, there was no mechanism in place to do so, so.
Well, they were, they were. More valuable as hotel rooms than they were. I mean, back then, they were pretty valuable as hotel rooms. Now all of a sudden, now we have all these condo hotels around that have more amenities, more this, more that. And that highway up there has become.
And the Airbnb is a given of some competition.
But, I mean, Woodwards just put what, a few dollars into that place? I mean.
I don't see a lot of cars on front.
There was another one that was having another cabin or two, wasn't it?
I think the, I mean, in addition to the clients that Jane had. They had a large number of towns who were sending their. Welfare recipients to the hotel up there. And they were using their COVID money to pay the bills. Right, so they were pretty far from those. From Littleton and. Appleham and a few other.
But if you look up there, Woodwards is probably the only one. One of the only ones that have put any money into their facility now and.
When the occupancy goes down, there's no money for improvements and that's what you need.
I think Indian heads been investing money.
Yeah, they've they've done some work last couple of years.
They just sent a big smile out of that deck.
Yeah, all right, moving on, Joe, so the Pemmy Base Camp. You know, this question of whether or not they're violating. You know, this question of whether or not they're in violation of site plan review.
I tend to go along or do it somewhere.
Okay, so.
Well, the point, don't touch Paul, but.
No, don't take it.
Okay. Okay, so I, so I say we should have a hearing. Just get it out of the way, get everything in the open.
So let's do it then.
So what, what do you think? Okay, there's two. You think we should have a hearing, just get it out in the open and make a decision once and for all?
I, I think we should have a hearing afterward presented with the facts of what was approved. And what we think the violations are, and I think that needs to come before we call and see.
Okay, so I guess the question is.
You want to put the watch over the car?
All right, so that's fine, so I, you know, personally, I'd like to have it here, but I mean, if we can just discuss it, put it away one way or the other, take a vote on it.
We had it on the agenda.
It's been, but it's been discussed a lot.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's the facts that are missing, so it's a lot of opinion.
Do you guys still have all your packets and all that stuff or do you need to make?
Believe I still have money.
Huh, I still have a lot, that's right, yeah.
Steve, how do you feel? Right, fine, I know where you stand.
Yeah. I mean, this whole thing started with the CD. And then it went for the rest of it, so.
All right, so let's put that on the agenda for two, in two weeks and discuss it. Or it'll take a vote, or do we need to leave it as is or? All right, is there anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
Second, all in favor?
So that will be the same meeting with self.
Would be.
Yeah, well.
Just checking, he's still looking.
Have they done any work for getting their ducks in a row?
Yeah, they were. Master plans.
No, 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 as far as this application is.
The one for the uh, that eight lots?
Yeah.
If they're going by their own master plan, you can't do fire site because. And fireside? You see that, I don't hate.